Vice Mayor Anderson. Present. Commissioner Butler is absent tonight. Commissioner Dawson?
Present.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Mayor Rainey?
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. The February 17th meeting of the BOC is called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you lead us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Ma'am, if you please stand by your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening tonight. God, we thank you, God, today for your protection during the storm, God. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community, God. Continue to lead us and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Motion passes. Five public hearings. I believe they're with the specific agenda items. Citizen comments? Ms. Johnson, do we have any?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Leslie Street?
If you'll tell us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
It's Leslie Street. My address is 1062 Highway 96 North here in Fairview. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Leslie Street. I was born and raised in Fairview, and I have seen every development occur here since the early 80s. There are a few topics I want to cover, of course, regarding the housing development plan for Northwest Cove LLC. There are multiple subdivisions being constructed in Fairview currently, and I'm sure you are aware of the current condition of Clemens Lake due to the construction on Lake Road. I am here to voice facts about the research I have done on the 20 acres, zoned RS40 trying to be zoned R20. The more houses you allow in the subdivision, the worse the surface flow will be going through the middle of a working family farm. The surface water will also contain contaminants from the subdivision. The water containment systems Fairview has in place currently for subdivisions is not enough to keep from polluting the surface water that will come from the subdivision. The 20 acres, which is part of Northwest Cove LLC, is a high point according to a topo map, which I have included in slides for later. I have researched the water surface flow from the 20 acres that the developer is trying to zone as R20. The 20 acre field, along with 19.88 acres lot, the Candlewood Cove LLC, has surface water and is on the map as record to flow directly across the Warden Farm under Highway 96. Um, I have, um, sorry. Um, I have included pictures of the amount of water that is showing from today. I actually have pictures today of some of the subdivisions and what it has done to our creeks today in Fairview over there. And those will be shown later also. The, um, the water, this water ends in the Harpeth River. It goes under 96. It goes through the Vardens, through the Pickens. It goes down to West Harpeth, uh, West Fresh Creek and ends up within the Harpeth River. The contaminants that are coming from the subdivision could harm animals, vegetation, and citizens' health due to the fact that we use wells around there. A subdivision takes away from the ability for the ground to soak up some of the surface water flow. Who is going to maintain the detention pond after the developer is gone? Who's going to maintain the detention pond of the subdivision if the subdivision decides not to keep the HOA that the developer put in place? Also, we asked the planning commission for a copy of the developer's plans for the 20 acres, and we were told there aren't any. How can the R20 decision be made without knowing the developer's plans for the land? Today, I rode around Lake Road, Cox Pike, Cox Run, Wiley Circle, Vice Lampley Northwest Highway, and Highway 96. I have pictures of the current and in-construction subdivisions and where their surface water flows. Some did not have a proper water containment system, and there was one subdivision that had a white pipe coming from a home's gutters that stuck out a few feet and straightened to the creek that flows towards Clemens Lake.
Leslie, I'm sorry. Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
I have more time. Thank you.
Mr. Bobby Butler?
Mr. Butler, if you'll state your name and your address.
Bobby Butler. I live at 7510 Nathaniel Woods Boulevard. I'm just downstream from Mr. Dawson. I've complained before about the flooding on Nathaniel Woods Boulevard. Mr. Dawson's well aware of it, so I don't have to repeat myself. I've brought this up in here before. I don't mean to be rude or crude by any means to anybody, but I've asked. I've sent you texts. I sent you one today. I'm sure you probably read it already, Mr. Collins. But I'd like to know when you're finally going to do something about the flooding and the storm drains in our city, especially in our neighborhood. Now, I've got pictures. I don't need to give them to you. You've got them. You've seen it. You live right there by it. I've got three councilmen that live down the street from me within 50 yards of one another, and nothing's been done about it. They haven't been able to do anything about it. They've done as much good about it as what a bag of hair would get done. I would like to see something done about it. I mean, you know, you got a $9.6 million bond you issued. There's money there. You spent $2.5 million buying a piece of property. You could have spent some money getting some storm drains repaired. I don't think that's asking too much as a taxpaying citizen on behalf of myself and the rest of the taxpaying citizens in our city. I think that's fair. And yes, I am getting a little bit loud and out of line, I guess. But it's upsetting. We shouldn't have to put up with this. I've been all day, and you know that, Rod, drying out my wife's carpets, trying to get water flushed out of the house because we go underwater, same as new people that just moved in across the street, and they aren't home yet. So I don't imagine they realize that there's water in their garage. I guess it's possible, but that's none of my business. But it's not a joke. And we all know that there's other people in our city that are probably flooded today, but they don't come in here and say anything. But I'd really like to know when you're going to do something about it. I'd like to see something done about it. I've been in touch with Mr. Whitson's office before. You know that. I tried T-Deck. We all know T-Deck's useless. They can't do anything here until we get, uh, what is it? W4 or something like that. They're not going to do anything until we make that rating. But I would like you to do something, please. Now, I've asked, and I've asked. It's all I'd like. I don't think that's asking too much. But please do something with our storm drain system. I don't want to float away down the road, you know? I bought my house to live in. If I, if I wanted a houseboat, I'd have gone to the lake.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elliot. Thank you. Public announcements, awards, and recognition, city events.
Good evening. This is just a reminder that we have the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 9th at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. We're going to have multiple food trucks, the Easter Bunny, uh, games for the kids. It's going to be, um, an event that's going to last for a few hours. Uh, we welcome everyone to come out and join the fun that day. Micah, can you go to the next slide, please? Uh, we're currently accepting, uh, sponsorships for the July 3rd event this year. July 3rd falls on Sunday. Uh, we're going to be starting at 2:00 p.m. with live music from multiple artists, multiple food trucks. I believe we have nine total. Um, and of course, our fireworks show, fun activities for the kids. And if you'd like to be a sponsor, you can come by City Hall and see myself, or you can give us a call at 615-387-6140. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Staff comments and monthly reports, Mr. Collins. And before you start the police report and the, all the reports, could you just give us a high view of the situation with the flooding in that subdivision? I, I know that we've talked about it, and I know that we cannot do anything about it legally because we're just putting water on someone else's property. So could you just kind of give us a, a high view of the, of the problem there?
Are you referring to Western Woods, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, if Mr. Butler would check his email, he, I was, he emailed me earlier today, and I was actually in his neighborhood, uh, working on the, uh, looking at the storm drain. In fact, I was in that neighborhood three times a day. 1:00 p.m., I believe it was 2:45 p.m., and just before dark tonight. As I explained to Mr. Butler in the email, which I'm sure he hasn't seen yet, um, the, the issue that he was experiencing today was not associated with the storm drain system. In fact, the storm drain system at that time was functioning the way that it should. Um, the detention pond was not, um, at capacity. It still had capacity in the pond. It was still draining under Wiley Circle onto the neighboring property. And there was no water standing or not being shed from any property within the subdivision or any storm drain inlet within the subdivision. Um, Mr. Butler's property specifically is the lowest parcel within the interior of that subdivision. I have no doubt he has water on his property. There was water on that property before he bought it. I believe he's been a resident for about 18 months. Scott Tucker and his wife were the residents before. Um, I believe they failed to disclose, which they're legally obligated to do, to disclose to Mr. Butler that there had in fact been flooding on that site. And, and further, uh, Mr. Tu, Mr. Tucker and, uh, Marlin Cunningham, the developer of the subdivision, had installed French drains on that, on that specific site to attempt to remove the water. Apparently, that's failed. Um, also, facing Mr. Butler's house, the property to the right, uh, part of the water that shed off their property is shed over to Mr. Butler's property through a series of shrubs and trees that are planted there that divert property to the, water to the back of his property. So when I was there today, again, on all three visits, there was no water coming from any storm drain inlet or any city on the right of way that was going to Mr. Butler's property. In fact, the water was coming from his neighbors pooling at the back of his house, and there was a slight area of water that was coming, um, if you're facing his driveway to the right, facing his house to the right of the driveway, draining properly into the storm drain inlet. So while I'd be glad to assist, uh, what we're looking at today simply didn't, simply didn't indicate in any way that there's a failure of the storm drain system that caused water to back up and, and cause that flooding or that issue. That was water that pooled, uh, from the neighboring properties. Secondly, as it relates to that property specific, or that subdivision specific, there are two issues or areas of concern. Issue number one is the detention pond itself. When that subdivision was approved, when the site plan was approved and construction plans were approved, there was an approval for water from that subdivision to pool into the detention pond as, as exists today. And that water was supposed to go under Wiley Circle and drain onto the neighbor's property. The problem with that is the detention pond outlet is below grade from the storm drain that runs under Wiley Circle. So until it floods, there's no opportunity for water to remove itself from the subdivision and from the detention pond under the road onto the neighbor's adjacent private property. Specific to that, and not yet to the last item, is the fact that the city has reached out to the developer, Mr. Cunningham, and the property owner, Mr. Spicer, across the road to attempt to negotiate some sort of agreement between the two so that the detention pond could be improved and that Mr. Spicer would agree to allow the excess flow of water, uh, onto his property. Mr. Spicer and his business partner formerly owned the property, which is now, that is now Western Woods. Uh, they have so far refused to allow that. So the issue you have specific to the neighborhood is you have a detention pond, um, that can be at capacity, but it is below grade from the drain that runs under the road. And the drain that runs under the road runs onto private property not owned by the city, and we can't mandate that that water be moved across the street. The third component of that is there is a house on the backside of Nathaniel Woods, and there is a storm drain inlet that was built at, at the backyard of that, of that home. The builder did that at the time to divert water that runs off of Cox Pike and Wiley Drive at the back of the neighborhood that diverts water off of those properties away from his house into the storm drain inlet and under the system, which was constructed as an unapproved storm drain inlet. We have presented to the city on several occasions two solutions. The first solution is to attempt to negotiate the purchase of property between the developer and the private property owner, Mr. Spicer, to improve the stormwater, um, outlet. Uh, so far, those negotiations have been, um, not fruitful. However, those are private property owner negotiations, not the city's. The second would be to go in and plug, um, the storm drain that, um, empties into the existing storm sewer system from the unapproved storm drain that exists behind the neighbor's backyard. The problem with doing that is if the city does that, you're going to flood, with 100% surety, you're going to flood two residential homes that will be caused by the city plugging of its, of its line. So with that, um, we can go back in and, and plug that thing, but we're going to ultimately purchase two homes and two lots if that takes place. That's not really favorable to the city of tax, city of Fairview or the taxpayers to purchase those because it doesn't make sense. Again, specific to Mr. Butler's property, we've not seen anything that suggests that the storm sewer system has backed up into his yard. It appears to be watered downhill at pools in his yard. Including in the email that I sent Mr. Butler today was a claim form, a standard claim form for the city of Fairview, requesting any information he had, including estimates for indoor repairs or suggested claims against the city. So we have a formal document to follow up with, and I hope that he completes that document for us and provides that to the city. So, Mayor, I hope that's as much information as, as you were hoping for. That's a full rundown, um, for purposes of this meeting for the stormwater in Western Woods subdivision.
That was all the information I was hoping to get. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got one question regarding that. Have we received any of those forms from anybody in Western Woods? Any of the, the, the forms that you were talking about?
No, sir.
We've not? Okay. And, and I, I saw the, the water coming off of that other property into Western Woods, and I, I think it's just, uh, the volume, the sheer volume of water coming through there, uh, going into that unapproved culvert. It's, it's well past the capacity. It's actually going over the culvert, you know, and down through those properties. So, uh, you're right. I, I just, you, you wonder, what, what are we going to do just because of that volume of water? One other thing, can you talk to us about T-Deck again? Uh, and I think this is important. When we are responsible for stormwater versus T-Deck, and when we start talking about inspection and when we also talk, talk about enforcement?
I'll attempt to briefly.
Okay.
It's a broad, broad subject. So let me, let me start the conversation by, you'll have, you see, you'll see on your agenda tonight on, under item 11A, new business. That is the city's first read for its new stormwater ordinance. Um, it does apply some teeth to the city's ability to, to make some enforcement, um, take some that we haven't had in the past. Specific to T-Deck, um, the terminology that Mr. Butler, and I, I know he doesn't, um, I get it confused from time to time. MS4, municipal separate storm sewer system. That is a city's responsibility or city's area of responsibility as it relates to stormwater. Typically, the threshold, uh, for population, for the city to be able to have effective control over stormwater is a population of 10,000 or more. When you reach a population of 10,000, you are deemed MS4, um, and the requirements and regulations for stormwater then fall upon the city. Before you are a population of 10,000, you are at the mercy of T-Deck for what they approve, the work that they go through, and the regulation of, of stormwater. Um, Fairview's population right now is about 9,347, based on the most recent census. What you have before you tonight under 11A is our anticipation that we are going to be deemed, um, MS4 in the near future, and we're preparing to be able to police stormwater on our own behalf rather than have to lean on outside agencies to do that work. So I hope that answers that question, sir.
It, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Now, are you the police report tonight, Tony?
I'm the police report today.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I'll, again, I'll attempt to be brief in these. For the police department, um, um, the personnel report, uh, the, the biggest change you see for the police department is the, uh, training hours increased from 241 in December to 360 in December. Uh, we anticipated that. Obviously, December is a difficult month for staffing, events, and otherwise to get that training done. But, uh, we encourage our department's police department to take advantage of the most training hours that they can. Uh, the second page you have for you is, um, our self, our self-initiated calls. Self-initiated calls are typically interactions we're going to have with the citizen, traffic stops, um, public service interactions, that sort of thing. Um, December 21, we were at 816. January of 2022, we were at 1,009. So that's an, uh, increase of about 25%, uh, which is always good for us. We want to be able to, to promote those interactions when we can. On your activity, uh, your arrests, uh, were up in January compared to December. Uh, most everything else was, was the same. Um, citations were significantly up in January. But again, that's because of being at full staffing and being able to have those, those officers on the street. Traffic accidents, we were down. Uh, we would like to think that the traffic accidents being down is a result of the increased enforcement. Um, if you take just those two lines, let's look at December. Um, you see 53 citations and 23 traffic accidents. If you move to January, you see 162 citations and 14 traffic accidents. So we hope, uh, and it would be the goal that your traffic enforcement reduces traffic accidents or, uh, traffic, uh, related activities such as that. Um, so those are good, good numbers for us, um, in January as opposed to December 21. And then the next page is just your public relations. In addition, there are none tonight. Obviously, we're, um, engaging with the public as much as we can, and, and those numbers in the previous place, page showed that. Be glad to answer any questions if I can related to the police department.
I would like to say that I don't know which two police officers were on duty this afternoon on Chester Road, but once again, they were waiting water with their shoes and their pants on, trying to get debris out of the, get the debris off the road. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. I'll add two interactions with the public on this, on this report for.
Please do. Go ahead and add that.
They, they do a good job.
Anything else from the board? I'm assuming you're the fire chief tonight, Tony?
I am.
You need hats.
Um, emergency response calls, um, for the, January was 109. That's up from 94 a year ago. Um, that's not to be unexpected. People are out. Um, 21 was kind of a low year for all those, um, engagements, and we, we understand that. So we expect all of our 22 numbers to be up. On the next page, uh, our significant events are, we had nine overlapping incidents. An overlapping incident is when we're on one call and then receive another call. We have those overlapping incidents. Three, automatic or mutual aid. That's when we assist outside agencies. Um, our, um, shift personnel completed their CPR recertifications, and we had one, a new employee brought on board this month. So public education or outreach opportunities, we had 33 interactions at two events. Um, our average dispatch to arrival time this month was, uh, six minutes and 20 seconds. Average operating time on scene is 13 minutes and 13 seconds. That's a good number for us. Um, the less amount of time we are on a scene, uh, that means that's a less serious scene. So the more we can keep that number low, that's good for the community, and we hope that that, that number stays low. Uh, again, as we say, um, each month, um, if someone's interested in having a, um, fi, a smoke detector, please call the, uh, fire department at the regular nine, at the regular line, 615-799-3473. We'd be glad to schedule that, have our crew come out. And, um, as a reminder, um, when, if you have a, an emergency call for service, uh, we encourage everyone to dial 911. The, um, the website, if people go on the website to look at the police department or fire department, it typically shows up with the direct line call. Um, we prefer that if it's an emergency, you dial 911 and, and, um, make that call and get that interaction. Our January breakdowns, um, rescue and medical calls continue to be the primary focus of those. Most of those are backing up, um, Williamson County EMS. Seventy, 77% of our calls this month were medical calls and backing up EMS. Uh, the next page, you see what we refer to as the heat map. The red areas are where you get most of the calls, and obviously, it centers around the center of town and then the Highway 96 corridor. Surprisingly, the, uh, truck stop at 96 and 1, and 40, um, was reduced this month. Um, most of the calls we get there are transient calls where someone's traveling on the interstate, they, they have some interaction there. Those numbers were, were down for us. That's good. So we don't like to see any of the, those areas red, but anytime we see an area red reduced, um, that's favorable to us. And then the last page you have is your training hours, um, for the month of January, and there were 530 hours of training this month. And then the last page is just operational photos from the fire department. So be glad to answer any questions on those if I can.
Any comments from the board? I'm assuming you'll be the city manager.
I'll, I'll be the city manager as well. Um, and lastly, just two items for you on there. You've seen the emails. We're working on the amended budget and the new budget. Um, part of that is to get information back from the, uh, BOC regarding projects, pro, programs they like to see in the budget year that begins July 1. The email that I sent la, or earlier this week requested that I get that information by the March 27th Board of Commissioners meeting, or March 24th Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, so when we get that information, I can plug that into the budget, at least, um, make an effort to figure out what those numbers look like, and then we'll have a budget work session after that and figure out what we can include, um, in that budget. Those, those are, um, standards every year, and we look forward to continuing that this year. And lastly, um, the meetings for the BOC are regularly scheduled next month for March 3rd and March 17. The March 17 meeting is spring break week, so March 17 will be moved to March 24th. So the March, city of Fairview Board of Commissioner, Board of Commissioners meetings will be March 3rd and March 24th. And that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Oh, business. A, rezoning of property on Highway 96. We will now open the public hearing for that property. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that? You want to say? Okay. I'm sorry? Is there anyone that would like to speak during the public hearing on this property? CNN 01, we will close the public hearing. Item 10A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-01. Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 11.08 acres of property consisting of County, Williamson County Tax Map 018, parcel 029.01, located on Highway 96 North from CG Commercial General to RM20 Multifamily Residential, property owner Horizon Property Partnership, Agent T-Square Engineering. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone here to speak on that project?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nathan McVeigh with T-Square Engineering. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have for this item.
Why don't you remind us what your project is going to be?
So this is a request for zoning from CG to RM20. Um, the, the 2040 plan, uh, describes this property as interchange business. Interchange business does allow for multifamily residential in this area. So this site is going to be designed to have multifamily around the pond. The pond will be amenitized. We've talked with the Water Authority of Dixon County, um, and they can support this with conventional sewer. So we'll be proposing, uh, multifamily to the planning commission hopefully next month.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
So runoff is, is always a, a question that comes into play. What measures are you going to take to, to mitigate any kind of contamination runoff uh, for a subdivision or a development?
Sure. So we'll have to get in, analyze the pond, figure out what kind of storage capacity the current pond has, analyze the hydraulics there. Um, we'll, we'll just ensure that everything is, is treated per T-Deck standards. You know, during construction, silt fence, um, sediment traps, anything we could use to slow sediment from getting in that existing body of water. And then downstream, anything as far as check dams, uh, additional silt fence measures, uh, to help it from leaving the site at all. Um, you know, once the site is stabilized, we can go ahead and start doing, you know, permanent floor bays, that kind of thing prior to the water going into the body of water. Um, so those things we discuss with staff and the regulations to, to make sure we're in accordance.
Anything else from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
No.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Rezone of property on Northwest Highway. We will open the public hearing for that property now. If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Julie Fisher. I live at 7276 Northwest Highway, which butts up to where they want to, where you want to put all of those homes. My front door is feet from that property line, and you want to put in an enormous amount of houses in there when you're already developing across the street from me. My, I'm sorry, I'm very emotional about this because I have lived in Fairview all my life. I'm pretty sure that anything I say here is going to go unheard, but I want you to know that our city wants, our community was once a farming community, and it had beautiful property. And we're allowing it, I'm not allowing it, you are allowing it to be taken away from us. I work 10 and 12 hours a day for Williamson County Schools, and when I come home, I want to be able to sit down on my front porch, listen to the crickets and the frogs, and not have a freeway going through my front yard. Nor do I want to hear HVAC systems and lights buzzing next to me. There's going to be noise pollution, there's going to be light pollution, and my way of life will be changed forever. You're taking away my sanctuary. The animals that live on that property will no longer have a habitat. You've taken that 20 acres and the, what is it, 19?
19.8 acres.
That attached to it, and you've allowed the developer just to run and do what he wants. And that's not fair to the people who live on Northwest Highway already. It's not fair to my neighbors, it's not fair to me, and it's not fair to this community. I want it to go on record, to be heard. I want to know, have we, has, is the EPA or the Corps of Engineers engaged in any of this to make sure that these developers are going in and doing what they're supposed to do to protect our streams and our property? I have a well, and there's no doubt in my mind that when all of that construction starts, my well is going to be contaminated. There's no doubt in my mind. You're developing all the way around me. I just want you to hear the citizens of Fairview and not the developers of Fairview, and understand that you're changing our lives. If I wanted to live in a subdivision 38 years ago, I would have built my house in a subdivision. If I wanted a freeway going across my front door, I would have moved on Highway 100. I don't want that. That's not what I want for my community. That's not what I want for my neighbors. And I think if they were here, they would agree with me. It's too much development, too fast, in one small area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before that, just, because there may be others to speak, just a point of clarification, just so everyone for the record understands. And I understand the last speaker's passion in this item, but there were a couple of references to you want to develop this area and you want to have these homes built. And I just want to make sure everyone understands, the City of Fairview nor the Board of Commissioners is proposing or requesting that any development take place. The Board of Commissioners's job, as you well know, is to review applications that are made to you for this. So I just want everyone to understand that this is not a proposal that was crafted, suggested, requested, or otherwise promoted by any member of the Board of Commissioners or the city. This is a proposal made to the city for your consideration, just so everyone understands your role in this, to understand that this is not something the city, you are attempting to do or to propose. It is a matter brought before you for consideration, and that's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir, please. Oh, you've got all the time you want. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Ron Buttry, 7506 Lake Road. Some of this direct and referenced what this gentleman said and what Ms. Fisher said. I witnessed two different developments. One, a wily circle. There was no barriers put up. I seen it myself and called. There was literally mud and dirt that washed across the road, three to four inches deep. It was so bad that it literally filled up the gully on the other side of the road and was running all over the place, runoff from that development.
I don't doubt that, sir.
Another instance, over on Horn Tavern Road, that development. I lived right across Frank Lever. And his pond, when they developed it, no barriers. He had a little pond there with a lot of fish. There was so much runoff and mud that went into that pond, it killed every fish in the pond, and it stank. Presently, I'm witnessing the development off of Cox Pike, Old Highway 96 that's been back there. The runoff from it has turned Clement's Lake into a mud puddle. It needs to be looked at. Really, seriously. It has turned that lake into a mud puddle. I live, I'm 73 years old. Guess where I've lived my life except for the time I was in the service, on Lake Road. My brother was born in the house right here, and my two sisters was born in the house right here. That lake has never looked like it. It looks like a mud puddle. The city ought to start, if they say okay, then they ought to back it up and watch what's been done. If it ain't right, something needs to be done about it, but nothing seems to be done about it. So there's so many complaints, they have to do something about it. I've witnessed those things, okay? So that's why I had to bring it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, I had, went to the Fairview Ford 2040 Plan that is on the City of Fairview website. I pulled a bunch of, there were takeaways for all the meetings that were done at Count Mary Mount. I have a list of most of those takeaways. One of them that really sticks out to me is this one, and it was on, it's on page 78 of the Fairview Ford Plan. It's preserve the rural character along portions of Fairview Boulevard and Highway 96 by limiting development to large lot residential and agricultural uses with intent of creating a natural gateway into the developed areas of Fairview to maintain or change the zoning of these areas to an agricultural district. This is what the citizens said in those meetings. And like I said, I have a whole list of different takeaways from different pages of all that, of the Fairview Ford Plan, and every one of them, the community, the citizens, want to keep it rural. We don't want Nashville, we don't want Franklin. Out here now, during rush hour or during school, when people go to school and leave school, it's just as bad as Franklin and Nashville now. I work in Franklin, and I know what it's like. I worked in Nashville, and I know what it's like. It takes three or four minutes to get one mile down the road now. What took 10 minutes to get from my house to the high school now takes me 20 minutes because of all the traffic. And the city, the citizens in that Ford Fairview Plan have stated that they want to keep it rural, and that's what I need. That's what I want, for me, for my daughters, for my family farm. Keep it rural, please. We don't want Nashville and Franklin. It's a concrete mini-city is what we'll be if you keep building so much so fast. I'm not against development, but we need to slow down. We still got 20, like 18 years left of that 2040 Plan, but still, everyone wanted it rural. They even specified that they would like one-acre homes. The lots in Fairview, that's in here, too. It's all from the citizens that whoever wrote out that plan put on there as takeaways from those meetings. So please listen to the citizens. Please keep us rural. Please don't make us a concrete city. I ran a race last weekend in downtown. The whole nine miles, I thought, oh my gosh, this is what Fairview's going to turn into. It stinks down there, you smell sewer, and when it rains, it's really bad, and there's no place for water to go as long as you have concrete and asphalt. You have to have land to soak up the overflow. And I also have a slide that's supposed to be played eventually that will actually show you what Wiley Road looked like today, and it shows you all the subdivisions around us that happened today, and we're not even, we don't even have everything that everyone's proposing as far as high density. We need low density. We need the 50/50 conservation plan for subdivisions where they have to have 50% greenway and 50%, and even if it's developed land, it has to be used for that. Please, please keep us rural. Please use the 50/50 plan at least, and keep it an acre. Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will move to B2. Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-2. The Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 20 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 021, parcel 063.00, located on Northwest Highway from RS40, low-density single-family residential to R20 residential. Owner Northwest Cove LLC, Agent T-Square Engineering. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion from the board?
I would like to say something, Mayor. You know, when it comes to the sale of property, folks that have farms that determine at whatever point they want to sell that property, we have a conundrum. We have properties that border other farms, so we have, we have two individuals that want two different things for their properties. These two properties here fit the 2040 comprehensive plan. Collectively, the citizens of Fairview, the Board of Commissioners at the time, everybody collectively decided on this comprehensive plan. And somebody loses at the end of the day. What we decided at that point during the vote for that comprehensive plan was to allow that RS20 be allowed in that corridor. This is one of those tough decisions, unfortunately. I want to keep Fairview, I want to keep that hometown feel. And when we start talking about rapid or explosive growth, we have not seen rapid nor explosive growth here in the City of Fairview when, compared to like cities.
We're not like cities. You're fair.
You are exactly right, and I love Fairview as well. So when it comes to strategic growth, and I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but I want strategic growth. I don't want rapid growth. I don't want hours of waiting in line anywhere, but I do want strategic growth. And I do see that this ordinance or this request does meet the 2040 Plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Hearing no other discussion?
I think that's board discussion. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Is there anything you would like to add?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good evening. Nathan McVay with T-Square Engineering again. Like Commissioner Dawson said, you know, this is, by the 2040 Plan described as new residential median neighborhood, and RS20 fits that. Nothing's been submitted to planning, but we've done some internal sketches. RS40 would give you one dwelling unit per acre. We've got 28 lots currently, which is 1.4 dwelling units per acre, so we wouldn't even be using the full RS20 to its maximum extent. That'd be a maximum of 40 lots. So 28 lots to be proposed in this site. This site's also a part of the realignment of Northwest Highway. We've discussed with staff, the Lampley property, which is located on the southwest corner of Northwest Highway, was approved with the new Collector Road realigning Northwest Highway, and Belvoir Drive was then established along the 90. So this site, in conjunction with the site that's to its northwest, will also help realign that 90-degree turn on Northwest, which is now Belvoir Drive, as a four-way intersection. And so once Belvoir Drive is established there, it should reduce the traffic along that road. Once the Collector Road is set, most of the traffic will use that new 62-foot right-of-way going through the Lampley property. This site has also been discovered with, or discussed with the Water Authority of Dixon County, and it will be served by conventional sewer as well. I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I've got one more, Mayor. So we have had issues with runoff in the past. How are we going to make sure that we're staying compliant and we're not going to have some of these issues that we've discussed?
Sure. So this site does drain from south to north, and so the north side will have detention ponds, and they'll be designed and installed per the city's standards. Like Mr. Collins said, there's a, you know, the ordinance coming up on your business items. You know, that will set the standards to which we design to, and most municipalities have those regulations and everything is designed to that standard. So any post-runoff will have to be improved, better than what it is now currently on site.
Anything else? Sorry, no. Hearing no other discussion from the board. Ms. Johnson, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Mayor Rainey?
No. So it is a tie vote. Mr. Collins, remind us again what that means.
Mayor, members of the commission, the tie vote means that the motion did not fail. The motion simply did not carry. In that instance, it can be brought up, it can be brought back by a member of the board for consideration.
Okay. Any member of the board?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. New business. 11A, first reading of ordinance 2022-08. Vice Mayor.
An ordinance of the City of Fairview to amend the City of Fairview Municipal Code to create Chapter 4 of Title 14, which shall be known as the City's Stormwater Ordinance and shall govern and regulate stormwater within the City of Fairview corporate limits.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion from the board?
Mr. Collins, I've got a question specifically about this, and stormwater has obviously always been an issue here with the City of Fairview and continues to be. Can you explain to us what this ordinance is going to do with kind of tightening up maybe the inspection and helping us to make sure that we don't have some of the major issues that we have in the future?
Yes, sir. This document is about a year in the making, and there are two things that we're attempting to do, if not three. Obviously, we're headed toward MS4. The purpose of this document is to give us a set of regulations that we can enforce as part of being an MS4 community. We look forward to being able to do that. The second component of this is give us the ability to enforce additional fines for non-compliance. As we've discussed in this room on numerous occasions, as it relates to a criminal penalty, the most that the city can impose for criminal violation is $50 per occurrence. So if we were to issue someone a citation for illegal dumping into the lake over on Highway 96 at Lake Road, I know we've met with the property owner over there a couple of times and had some discussions, actually have some of their lake water in my office. What this ordinance allows us to do in addition to creating the document that governs how stormwater will be managed is, this document also gives us the ability to levy up to a $5,000 will be managed is, this, this document also gives us the ability to levy up to a $5,000 civil penalty in the event of a violation. So as we go through the process, if the city was responsible for the management and oversight of certain stormwater, rather than the current or existing form of being able to issue them a $50 criminal penalty per, per day or per occurrence, this document gives us the authority to issue up to a $5,000 civil penalty per occurrence, which greatly adds some substance to our ability to make those enforcements. Now, what we would have to do in that instance is file a civil complaint. We'd have to pull all the information and do those, but we would issue a summons or we'd issue a fine to them for that amount or up to that amount. And then if there was some discussion after that, then we would file a motion or we'd file documents in Williamson County Court to collect those based on the violation. So we, we, we've taken some time. Again, I certainly understand the discussions of, of the developments that were done in the past. Developments that were done in the past, specifically in the 80s, 90s, early 2000s, did not have the requirements in place that we have today for stormwater management. The idea of a silt fence to protect property being developed in the 80s just didn't exist unless you wanted it to exist. The ability to enforce those things weren't there. Those regulations have been strengthened through the state, all states. This document gives us the ability to mirror those and enforce those ourselves once we get the opportunity to be deemed by the state to do so. In addition to this, we've added, as you know, a second staff engineer to help with the enforcement inspection of these. So this is not something that the city has heard over a period of years and ignored. This is something that the city has heard, recognized, and invested significant time and money in to be able to protect. That's what this document does for you tonight. So with the technical specs, I'll be glad to help you those as best I can, although I'll probably have to read it and get back to you. There'll be a public hearing on this at the next meeting, and both our engineers will be here to answer any technical questions for those. But I can tell you that this document is an incredible leap forward for the City of Fairview as it relates to its management of stormwater.
And I'm, I'm guessing that when we become the official MS4, that this document will blend seamlessly into that?
This will be your document.
Yes. And it will meet all the state requirements at that point in time.
This mirrors those, and this will be your enforcement document.
So what we're doing is jumping ahead and going ahead and doing what the MS4 is going to require us to do before we're required to do it.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe. Do we not? Thank you. Hearing no other discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Communications to the mayor commissioner. Vice Mayor, I'm going to start with you tonight.
Okay. I appreciate everyone that comes out, and I just appreciate all your comments and how passionate you are about Fairview. Sometimes we may have to make hard decisions out here. The way I see things is a lot of people want to come in and they want to do really high density, and I don't like high density for our community personally. So when someone comes in with a project that has nice homes and a lower density model, that's what I tend to lean towards so that, you know, if we approve that, then the higher density, it's, it's done and the higher density is avoided. So that's, I just wanted people to understand how I feel about that. Also, I just want to encourage everyone to just, you know, we have a lot of new people in our community, a lot of new neighbors, and they've moved here from different states, and they have really, they come and I, I see them and have talked about how wonderful our community is and how welcoming we are. So I appreciate that, and let's just help keep Fairview beautiful and pick up and not throw out trash. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody that came and spoke tonight. It's very easy not to come to the BOC meeting and to speak, and I want you to know that we do listen and we do hear you. And I appreciate you coming forward specifically to the meeting. It's significant, and we wish more citizens would actually do that. Please contact us on our cell phones via email, whatever. So please don't ever think that we don't hear you, we're not listening, because we certainly do. Stormwater, you know, I sat there and watched my neighbors' homes flood tonight. Stormwater is an issue for us in many subdivisions. And unfortunately, we did not have good control over managing that stormwater before. With this ordinance that we have in place tonight, we are on the path to make sure that the inspections are done correctly, and we're going to be able to have a much better handle on that. Mr. Collins, I believe there, there's going to be some money in the budget for us to, to help with stormwater issues in the, in the city. Is that correct?
Mr. Dawson, members of the commission, Mayor, the, we have in the, in the bank today through some federal stimulus money, $1,225,000 available for that. We'll receive another $1,225,000, I believe in July of this year, for a total of $2,450,000. 100% of those dollars are allocated to stormwater projects and stormwater management.
Okay. What is our plan in identifying some of the major issues that we have throughout the city? Can, can you walk me through, you know, what that's going to look like in the future?
It's already underway. Our engineering staff has been working on this for the past 90 days. Part of, part of their work involves the passage of this ordinance that you have before you. As soon as we get that done and it passes, I assume that it will, the second meeting in March, then we'll follow up on preparing the, the final plan as best we can for those mitigation efforts and start those.
And obviously, they're, they're quite familiar with some of our troubled spots in the city?
Yes.
Already. Okay. What is the form called again for the citizens that need to submit that paperwork to this, to the city?
It's just a standard claim form. They can reach out to me, and we, we send that out to them and have them complete it and return it.
Okay. And I plead with anybody having issues with stormwater to fill that claim form out and to get that into the city. It's vitally important for us for documentation. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing to not, Mayor. Thank you.
I would like to say that I understand every one of you. I live in a subdivision that was built probably close to 50 years ago, and every time it rains, I live on a hill, and every time it rains, I'm afraid my house is going to wash off the hill. So I understand every bit of your concerns. I think that, that you all also need to remember that we were not here when those things were done, and we are trying very hard to correct those problems, take care of the problems when we hear them, and work toward a better solution for all of it. Unfortunately, I don't expect the city to come to my neighborhood and try to redo that because it's impossible. So bear with us. We're making improvements. We're putting things in place, and we're listening to you, and we understand it and we see it. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.